Alright Abby, I do have it streaming live to YouTube and I have us doing a recording to the cloud just as a backup in case, but it does look like it's working.
Okay, am I presenter?
Yeah.
And I can share the PowerPoint? Is anybody coming?
Oh, there's Wayne.
Good evening Wayne.
Good evening. Are you in charge tonight?
Uh, I'm running the PowerPoint.
Well, good, alright.
Mel won't be here, um, she's on vacation, but Jacob will be here, so. Uh, in terms of the technical aspects, me and Gretchen are running the show, but. We're not, yeah Gretchen's running the, the livestream.
Let's see if she's paying attention.
Yep, of course.
Am I the first on?
Yep. And then just to let you know too Wayne, we do have the stream started, just because I wasn't sure how difficult that was gonna be, so just to be aware, we are recording, but.
Alright.
We're all good, I just wanted to let you be known of that.
Okay, Todd's on.
Yep.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good, how are you Todd?
Good, thank you.
And just to let you know Todd, we are recording, just because we don't have Mel here, who's usually the one doing the livestream for us, so I started it a little early, just in case there were complications. Thankfully, there's not, but I'm not wanting to stop it and then redo it.
Okay, no problem. Well, you're confident.
Heck, yeah, pretty much how it is today. I don't do this when we're down in chambers usually. Usually I'm already over in the bullpen already, so Mel's usually the one who does that for us, so. Looks like we have Keith.
How we doing?
Good, how are you Keith?
Good, doing real good.
Where are you Keith?
I'm somewhere south. What's going? It's, it's hot here, is it hot up there?
Haven't been out since this morning.
It's like a little bit hot, but it's not terrible. It's like, actually, you know, I think it is hitting ninety right now. And it's pretty humid, but it's not awful.
It's St. Louis weather.
That's it.
Well, this is supposed to be the rainy season down here in Florida. And it hasn't rained in two weeks. So, there you go.
You progressing down there?
No, I, yeah, I am, but, but. Things were supposed to happen, I was supposed to had a roof completed, uh, Saturday, a clay tile roof. And I had to get up on a ladder myself. Cut, cut some flashing for these people that do it every day, they're on the experts. And, and then they went, oh, oh, oh yeah, we see, 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 and I'm like, okay, damn it. And it's, you know, it's, it's a licensed legitimate, big dollar contractor and it's unbelievable. It's called subcontractor under a subcontractor under some contractor, you don't know who you're getting to work on your ass. Not good.
Is the company local?
They are, they are.
Okay.
And they were recommended by a roofing contractor from St. Louis, who has a place in Naples, but. You know, and then they pull up in the, uh, the company truck with the company trailer, but, you know, when. When I talk to these guys, I know darn well they understand me, and then they dummy up that they can't speak no, no lingo.
Amazing how that works.
Well, you know what, then when you tell them that you've been doing this for fifty years, they, they, their eyes bug out and they go, oh, okay, you're not the normal schmuck there that we can pull this over.
Yeah.
Until the next time they come, you gotta re-educate them again.
Hey Wayne, it's Sandy.
Yes Sandy.
Hi, quick question for you.
Yeah.
On the executive meetings, these are recorded and available to the public, right?
Yes, they are.
Okay, just wanted to.
Recording now.
Yeah, just to let everybody know, sorry folks, um, yeah, we do stream this live to YouTube, um, so people can watch it live.
Okay, it's fifty-seven, it shouldn't have been started yet.
I know, we didn't have Mel here, so I didn't know how this was gonna go over, so.
Okay, I will, I will watch what I say then.
Sandy, we've always done these in the past. In chambers, but, uh. We're trying to see if it's more advantageous to just do a Zoom, because normally these last about thirty minutes.
I think it worked fine for me last time.
Okay, good.
I think it's a good idea. And then next week for the public meeting, I'll be out of town, so I'll, I'll attend by Zoom.
That would have been your first public meeting?
No, last month.
Oh, you did, okay, you were there, okay.
Is, is Mel out of town?
Yes.
Good for her, we're, I hope she went somewhere to have some fun.
Uh, I think she's on a beach somewhere, so I think she's gonna be happy.
Hopefully it's not up in New York.
No, I don't think so, I don't think she went that far.
I think it's in Naples. Naples, that's a good place, there you go.
Here, we've got six, uh, anybody not getting on tonight? Oh, Gary's here.
I have seven, yeah. I don't see. Mr. Cunningham, um, who else are we missing? I don't see Mr. Bedell. So I think that would be the nine, correct? Yeah, those are the two we're missing then. I'm not sure personally if either one of them is able to attend tonight, I don't know if anybody else, if Abby or Jacob knows by chance on that.
No, Abby, did Evelyn let us know?
She did not let me know.
Okay, and I see Mr. Fagan, who I think must have, uh, must be able to attend, um, but I have six oh one, do we, I, you've got, you'll have a quorum, so do we want to go ahead and get started and take roll?
Yeah, let's go ahead and start then.
Abby, do you have the list in front of you, can you take roll, would you like me to do so?
If you could do it, please, I'm sharing the PowerPoint.
Yeah, no, understood, absolutely. Mr. Sneed?
Here.
Mr. Hilsinger?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Ms. Hart?
Yeah.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Bedell and Mr. Cunningham, so with that, uh, Mr. Hilsinger, you have seven, you have a quorum.
Okay. Uh, next we got meeting summaries, we need a motion to accept the minutes from the executive meeting of June five, twenty twenty-three. We have a second? Was that you lose on?
I guess on yes for the record.
That's alright. Okay, we have a motion to accept. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it eight zero. We do not have a planning status sheet. No committee reports, so we'll go to the first new business item, which is PC seventeen dash twenty-three, Banny Properties LLC.
Good evening, PC seventeen dash twenty-three, Banny Properties LLC was a request for a change in zoning from the C-two shopping district to the R-six residence district. For zero point one one acres located on the northwest corner of Gravoy Road and Philo Avenue, this is coming before the commission this evening as a letter of recommendation. As the commission may recall from the last public hearing, this site is located in South County and the site is, on the right is outlined in red. Here's a larger aerial with that site outlined in red along Gravoy Road. Staff is recommending approval of the change in zoning as Gravoy Road is characterized with a mixture of residential and commercial uses. The range of uses permitted in the R-six residence district zoning are reasonable and compatible with the surrounding area. This structure was designed and built for residential use. And due to the small size of the lot, only one single family dwelling unit could be accommodated on the property in the R-six. As well, staff would like to note that informational business signs are not permitted on residential parcels. So planning staff will work with the Department of Transportation and Public Works to ensure that the sign is removed prior to the issuance of occupancy permits. And at this time, I ask for a motion.
Okay, we need a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Do we have a second? I got a motion. Can we have a first and a second? Any comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero, and we'll go on to PC eighteen dash twenty-three, St. Louis County Planning Commission.
Good evening everyone, PC eighteen dash twenty-three, St. Louis County Planning Commission, this is a request for a rezoning from an M-three planned industrial district.
Up you.
I can't hear.
Yeah, we can't hear.
Is it not working?
Shane, is your microphone near your lips?
Sorry about that, okay, yeah. Okay, is it good now?
There we go, that's better.
Okay, yeah, okay, I'll just restart, yeah. PC eighteen dash twenty-three, St. Louis County Planning Commission, this is a request for a rezoning from a M-three planned industrial district to a R-five residential district. The tract size of the petition site is point six acres and the location is on the east side of New Hampshire Avenue, north of Weber Road. And this petition is coming before the commission as a letter of recommendation. As you can see on the left side, the location is in Afton, Missouri and South County, and on the right side, you can see an aerial view, which is, um, the subject site is highlighted in red, I mean, you know, light and red, yeah. And this is just an enlarged aerial view. And at this time, the planning department would like to request approval for this zoning petition citing that a site development plan establishing the uses permitted by the M-three planned industrial district ordinance was never submitted. Um, this is referring back to PC thirty-three dash ninety-eight, which was a petition that proposed the repurposing of the dwelling on the subject site into an office. Continuing along, the planning commission can revert zoning when an SDP is not approved within eighteen months of ordinance adoption. And lastly, the planning department finds that the R-five residence district is appropriate and is consistent with the zoning of surrounding parcels, therefore, we would like to request a motion.
We need a motion?
Like to make a motion for approval.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing no one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero, and next we've got PC nineteen dash twenty-three Hazelwood School District.
Good evening commissioners, this is PC nineteen dash twenty-three Hazelwood School District. Their request for a conditional use permit in the R-four residence district on a seventy-one point six-six acre tract on the southwest side of New Hall's Ferry Road, approximately a thousand feet northwest of Patterson. As you may recall, this site is in North County and on the right, you can see the site outlined in red in the aerial. Here's a larger aerial of the site and I've put an icon to indicate where the athletic field is. Uh, as opposed to a traditional preliminary site development plan, the petitioner submitted a, um, out boundary of the, um, school complex, so you can see that. And on the next slide, there's an aerial that, um, better indicates the, the scope of the athletic field. The department is, uh, recommending approval for granting a conditional use permit to permit a lighted athletic field. Um, the department finds that, uh, their request is, it's reasonable to permit a lighted athletic field at secondary schools of the appropriate size. Um, and that there are, and the department notes that there are existing examples from peer schools in the region. Um, with the expectation that lights spillage onto abutting parcels is minimized. Um, and thus, in the conditions, the department has requested that lighting shall not exceed point eight foot candles along any adjoining property line of our resident districts. And that lighted activities shall not extend beyond ten PM or one hour after activities are completed, whichever is later. And now I'd like to request a motion.
Hey, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second emotion.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Questions, comments, anyone? Seeing no one, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero, and we'll go on to old business, ready for action. And. The item is PC oh three dash twenty-three, Dormish Sharma.
Before we get to that, Mr. Hilsinger, we have one more, we have one more Hazelwood petition, twenty dash twenty-three.
Oh, we didn't do that, okay, let's, let's go back then, twenty, twenty dash twenty-three.
So before you have PC twenty dash twenty-three Hazelwood School District. It's a request for a conditional use permit in the R-three residence district to permit a lighted athletic field. It's on a seventy-five point one three acre tract on the east side of Dunn Road, approximately four hundred feet south of Claudine Drive. Uh, as you can see, the site is in North County and in red, you can see the site outlined in red. And once again, I put an icon on this larger aerial to show where the field is, um, in the greater facility of the campus. So once again, uh, they submitted a outboundry of the school's complex. And then a, um, closer aerial to give a better indication of how the athletic field is situated. Uh, much like with PC nineteen dash twenty-three, um, the department is recommending approval. Um, noting that we find, uh, athletic field reasonable in this location as well. Um, with the same stipulations that lighting shall not exceed point eight foot candles along any adjoining property line of our residence districts. And that lighted activities shall not extend beyond ten PM or one hour after activities are completed, whichever is later, and now I'd like to request a motion.
Hey, we need a motion?
I make the motion.
Second emotion.
We have a first and a second, questions or comments?
Um, this is Sandy, I do have a question, so the lighted activities shall not extend beyond ten PM or one hour after activities are completed. Seems like that would be whichever is earlier.
No, I think that you're right, uh, I think that you, that you're right, um, Commissioner Hancock, because we don't really want it to extend beyond ten PM. Uh, which we can make that correction in the, into the, uh, report, we can actually do it for both of the actions.
Okay.
Prior to sending these off for, because you will see these again at your next meeting in the finalized form, so we can make that correction, um, Peter.
I thought I was missing something.
No, I think you're correct, I think I'll make a note. Thanks Commissioner.
Thank you Sandy. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero, now we'll go on to PC oh three dash twenty-three.
PC OC, PC oh three dash twenty-three Dharma Sharma is a request for a conditional use permit in the C-two shopping district. For a point four one acre tract on the northeast quadrant of Telegraph Road and West Pottle Avenue. As you'll recall, this site is in South County and there it is outlined in red. Um, just a reminder of the timeline for this petition, public hearing was held on February fif, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, the commission held this request at your March twentieth executive meeting citing concerns about the proposed building location within the front yard setbacks. The petitioner then submitted a revised site development plan and architectural elevations. And the commission held the request again at the June fifth executive meeting with concerns about the architectural elevations. Um, the petitioner submitted revised elevations and, and that will be what's, uh, before you tonight. Um, so here's the second revised site development plan, which has not changed since you last saw it. And the, the landscape plan, which has been the same. These are the elevations that were presented at the June fifth executive meeting. And, uh, these are the revised elevations, which show a mix of higher quality materials and a greater degree of fenestration. Um, the department is recommending at least fifty percent of the facades be clad in stone. Um, so that's stone along the, the bottom, right now, we're requesting that, or recommending that it be brought up higher. Um, about to where the red line that I've drawn on the elevations is shown. Um, and of course, we are recommending that all sides be equally treated. And the facades be clad in a mix of brickstone and other high quality materials and that all facades have real fenestration. Uh, the department's recommended revision to the site development plan remain the same, which include landscape islands at the terminus of each parking row. No window signs or temporary parking lot signage permitted. Um, and we note that they'll be required to seek a variance to permit the drive aisle within the front yard setback. So the department is continuing to recommend approval of this request. We continue to find the CUP procedure appropriate and the, uh, proposed use appropriate at this site. Um, the specific conditions of development we are recommending are that the curb cut on Telegraph Road be limited to right out only. An alternate landscape plan be submitted, architectural review be required. And we note that the variance from the board of zoning adjustment will be required for the drive aisle location, so at this time, I would like to request a motion.
Uh, yes, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to hold until we can discuss and get a little clarification on a few items, ha, having read your report. I believe I'll need a second.
Second to that?
Second emotion.
Okay, Bill, you wanna?
Yeah, uh, sure, uh, in reading a report. Uh, the basis for, uh, uh, providing a CUP on, on this particular, uh, site was be, is because the existing. Um, or the petitioner currently has a CUP in the site that they're. At today. Uh, CUP, if I'm correct, is only good for that petitioner and only at that location. Uh, so my question is, uh, I don't remember, but my memory's not as good as most. Uh, I don't remember that this ever came to the CUP that's, uh, currently, uh, uh, on record. I don't think that ever came to, uh, uh, Planning Commission or the, uh, uh, council for approval. And I was just curious as to how that got approved.
Right.
What I'm reading is that they've been operating since twenty thirteen without a CUP.
So they never had a CUP?
That is correct.
Okay, so the, the basis of the fact that they have, uh, or, or that they don't have one now is not the reason that we're providing it now, so. I would take, I guess, uh, can, I have concern of, uh, approving a CUP. Uh, for the very reason that stated in your report, uh, two, uh, liquor stores should not be, uh, within a thousand feet of each other. And I think this is a very high concern with a lot of the people who did not show up for the public meeting. But certainly have been expressing their, uh, concerns. Given that. Uh. We, when we put it on hold, this on hold, we, we did, uh, ask for the things that you showed to us and I would certainly. Uh, uh, want to appreciate the staff's work on that, because a lot of the things that have been done, I think meets pretty much what we've been looking for. But I do think this, uh, uh, commission needs to address whether or not it should be, uh, uh, the petitioner should be warranted, uh, a CUP for this development.
Unless I'm missing something here, where is the existing liquor store now, how far away is it from the site?
It's about a hundred and fifty feet.
So.
It's down the hill and in, in a, an existing strip mall.
Okay, are they going to shut down the other liquor store, or are they gonna operate two of them?
Well, I don't, I don't know any of that.
It's our understanding that their, their intention is to move from, uh, their location in this. their location in this this retail center directly to the north to this site. The reason they need the conditional use permit is actually because of the existence of the Dirt Cheap Liquor Store that's across Telegraph Road.
So even if they shut this down, they still would be in violation of the thousand foot rule.
That's correct.
Yes.
How were they operating the last ten years? Did somebody caught him?
Is it because the the site is at where it currently is located based on the way that the distance is measured? Is that it it meets the thousand feet with the 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 way that the distances are measured? Because Abby, correct me if I'm wrong. It it's a pedestrian walkway. It's not simply a sort of a a straight line. So it meets as and currently they currently meet it, but the new location would not. Is that accurate, Abby?
I believe so.
But they never had a C U P. Is that correct?
That's correct, because I they did not need one for the current location.
So putting all that aside, I would like to suggest that because of the size and location of this project, that we do not approve.
And that is perfectly within the commission's purview is to deny the conditional use permit. And what we would do as your staff is that, based on your rationale, this evening, we would convert the letter into it into a letter of denial.
Right.
Do you do you withdraw your motion for a hold? And are you changing your motion for a hold to one of disapproving?
Yes, yes, I I would do that. And and I would. I would also say what contributed to some of my thinking is that this this building is all almost four thousand square foot. And and I think good planning would would probably not be to have that sized building on that very small site. So, but I would make a motion for denial. Yes.
Is that okay with the maker of the second?
Yeah, I would send my second.
And I would second the motion to deny. Okay, we got a motion on the floor for denial. Questions or comments? Anyone else?
I I have a couple of comments. The location that they're in now, Bill?
Yeah.
Is that where the, you know, the Dirt Dirt Cheap's across the street and then they the husband of years ago, and this has been years back, had that location. And then there was the liquor store that was next door to it. Are they in that location now? Or that the old liquor store is that moved down down Telegraph across some deer birds?
No. That that's true in terms of where the other liquor store went, but when Dirt
Now gone.
It's gone. Right. And and where Dirt Cheap is on the very corner, which is also highlighted in a little red or orange or something there. This this petitioner put a liquor store. If you look at the map directly north. There's a strip mall. There's a auto repair shop in the shaded section. A couple of other shops that like alteration shop and a shoemaker. There's other smoke shop, I think, and then the liquor store. So when I said a hundred and seventy-five feet, I probably think about how hit long I hit my golf ball. It it it's really a lot long further than that. As far as being away from this liquor store. That they're proposing.
Thank you.
So so I'm confused. Is it in violation of the thousand foot or is it not?
It would be.
So the the reason that they have to ask for a conditional use permit is because the zoning ordinance requires that the if you are to cite two liquor stores within a thousand feet of each other, packaged liquor stores, then you have to get a conditional use permit. So then what when any property owner is then goes in front of the planning commission to request a conditional use permit, they have to pass the four pronged conditional use permit test, which is that does it meet good planning practice? Can it be? Can it be cited in a way that is not detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of of residents? The the other two prongs are with I just don't have them off the top of my head. So when you, when the commission does issues or denies any sort of of conditional use permit. It is assuring that it does not find that any conditional use does not meet that four-pronged test as enumerated in your staff report. So the rationale that the commission puts forward for the denial of the request. You know, at its best will tie back to those four to the to that to that test to ensure that 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 the commission is stating it does not find that the placement of two liquor stores within a thousand feet can meet though that those criteria.
And that only applies
And I would agree with that.
Uh, it applies and and Mr. Hilsinger, it applies to all conditional use permit procedures. So if you ever had, so you know, in the C two shopping district. If you had any of the conditional uses, it is the responsibility and role of the commission to evaluate those conditional uses to ensure that it that they can be cited, you know, appropriately. And the and the whole rationale behind the conditional use permit process is that these uses are by their very nature, need a little bit more review to ensure that they can be cited appropriately, which is why the commission has given this this authority to to grant or deny these requests.
Yeah, I I don't understand why we would want to override the thousand feet. For a building that's basically put on a small lot. And needs B Z O B C A approval to go forward. So Jacob, as I am, I am, you know, pretty, pretty new to this process. So if we deny this. Okay, then it doesn't go to the C U P process, correct?
If it if it is denied, then they will not have the right to construct a liquor store at this location.
Okay, but if we move forward with it and we 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 say yes. Then it still has to go through the conditional use permit process and could still be denied at a later date because it doesn't meet one of the criteria.
No, this is this is that process. So the next process would be they would go through site development plan to ensure that any site development plan that they proposed met the criteria that the commission put forward. So this is but this process, this this decision tonight is the decision to grant or deny the conditional use permit.
Thank you.
Another variance or something that needed to be approved by someone else after us though, correct?
That is correct. And that would. So the Board of Zoning Adjustment is a three-person body that is exists in a quasi judicial space, which is tasked with hearing requests for a relief from a strict application of the zoning ordinance of design criteria of a site development plan. If there is a unique hardship that precludes them from being able to meet the standards of the zoning ordinance. So in this case, they have a their request would be to permit their drive aisles to be in the front yard. The zoning ordinance has design criteria that your front yards cannot be occupied with parking or with a drive aisle. And they would then have to justify their request to the Board of Zoning Adjustment at us at a later date if this commission granted the use. So that is a that is an additional uncertainty for the developer. But
You have a hardship on a building that's not been built.
So that is a that is because I don't want to. I don't want to theorize and and put, you know, sort of put those sorts of into a specific case such as this. But in general, it's going to be it's going to be there's some sort of you something unique about your parcel that makes it unduly burdensome for you to develop it in in line with the zoning ordinance. So it's going to be perhaps it is a you have a a site that that's particularly oddly shaped or you have a site that has very difficult topography. They those are the kinds of justifications that the Board of Zoning Adjustment typically takes into account when they grant their variances, something of that nature.
Okay.
But that has, just to clarify, that has nothing to do with the C U P.
That is correct. They are sep completely separate processes. The the
Right.
The nuts and bolts are the sort of the real meat of the question before this commission tonight is, is the use appropriate? And if the use meets and to help you determine whether that use is appropriate, to use that four-pronged conditional use permit test.
Okay, anyone else?
This is Sandy. So the way that that liquor store was approved across the street, that did not come through the planning commission, right?
That is correct.
We get blamed for it.
Now that it's there, it does seem, you know, it does seem like a different use of the corner property would serve the residents more if it was something other than a second liquor store. Is that essentially what we're saying? That doesn't meet the good?
That is one of the. Yes, that is one of the criteria that that can be tied into the 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 commission's letter of recommendation or excuse me, letter of decision, which is that this does not meet good planning practice because the concentration of liquor stores in such a small area, particularly high profile corner lots being occupied multiple high of of corner lots does not meet the intent and expectation of the planning commission for a vibrant commercial corridor.
Okay, thank you.
And that if if that is okay, we will put something we will. That is something that we will put into part of your recommendation or excuse me, part of your decision for denial this evening, if that is the will of the commission.
Good comments. Anyone else? Seeing none, we have a motion for denial. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstaining.
I am abstaining.
Mr. Fagan, and I believe that was Miss Miss Hart.
And the record, let the record show denial with a motion, a vote of six to two. And with that, we'll go to old business letters for approval.
Mr. Hilsinger, may I just a point of clarification? Did I hear correctly that the two commissioners abstained from voting?
Yes.
So the the vote would actually be six, six zero two, correct? Thank you.
Okay.
There are two letters of recommendation tonight, PC fourteen dash twenty-three Ameren and PC fifteen dash twenty-three Tiffany Mays. Both letters are consistent with the commission's recommendations from the June executive meeting.
Do we want to do these together?
If that is your will, yes.
Unless there's an objection, we have a motion for
Make a motion for approval?
Two letters?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. And we have a one correspondence item, PC thirty-seven dash twenty-two needy paws rescue.
Good evening, PC thirty-seven dash twenty-two needy paws rescue was a request for the for a conditional use permit in the C two to permit a pet care facility with overnight boarding for a track size of zero point one-six acres located on the northeast quadrant of Gravoy Road and Matilda Avenue. This is coming before the commission tonight as a response to the council order. As the commission may recall, this site is located in South County along Gravoy Road, right next to Federhoffers Bakery. The site is outlined in red on the right. This is just a brief timeline to for the commission. On December nineteenth of twenty twenty-two, the planning commission heard this petition at the public hearing. On January ninth, the planning commission voted to recommend denial of the request. On February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, the planning commission voted to forward a letter of decision indicating denial of the request. On February twenty-first of twenty twenty-three, county council referred the petition back to the commission for further consideration. On March twenty-second of twenty twenty-three, the Department of Planning staff met with the petitioner to discuss the planning commission's concerns. And then on June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, the petitioner submitted additional information to staff, which has led us here tonight.
Okay.
The department has prepared a response to council recommending approval. The couple of the big concerns was the first concern from the planning commission was parking concerns. The petitioner has noted that the needy paws van will not be parked on site overnight or remain all day at the site. The vehicle would only be on site for loading and unloading of supplies. They've also noted that for as far as parking goes for volunteers, they would only need one to two parking spaces for the volunteers on shift and then one parking space for the caretaker who will be living on site. Another concern from the planning commission was the unsupervised overnight boarding of animals. The petitioner has noted that a caretaker will live on site and as part of their leasing agreement will help to care for the animals that are being boarded overnight. The third concern that was of note was noise concerns. County council did recommend that plantings be added to the fence line to mitigate noise for the surrounding residents. The petitioner has also noted that overnight boarding would include letting the dogs out about four times a day in fifteen minute intervals. This with the last time being eight thirty to nine thirty P M, and they would only allow three dogs out at a time.
How many dogs would they be allowed?
They said in their letter, six dogs at a time and no more than two weeks. So the dogs would be only there for at most two weeks before they would find a foster home for them to go to.
Okay. Personally, I'm in disagreement. I can't see putting this next door to Federhoffers Bakery. The two just don't seem compatible.
And I will say too, just to for further information, they will be running this during the daytime hours, the same hours as Federhoffers. It will be run as an administrative building. The overnight boarding may just be for, as they stated in their letter, for overflow for animals that for dogs that they maybe couldn't find foster homes for immediately, but that's what they have said in their letter, just for the commission's understanding.
But most of these sites have overflows. At least that's what they report.
So we brought it. We did bring it to you this evening as a as a recommendation or excuse me, to choose to change the decision to approval. But staff will, again, this is we will draft it however the will of the commission is. And if the commission would, you know, however you want it done, we will. We will ensure that 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 we reflect your decision tonight.
So this I have a question. So if there if there can be six dogs and we're only going to let three out at a time for fifteen minute intervals, so there could be eight fifteen minute intervals or two hours a day with three dogs outside, right?
Yes.
I mean, is the concern that that they're going to be barking and it just really a disruption to the neighbors? Are the is there residential behind it? I think I
There is a residence right behind where the fence is, and that was one of the concerns that the resident himself brought up. And I believe was also brought up to the councilwoman as a concern.
I I think the responses of that the petitioner gave to you and that's contained in this recommendation. Many of those are what the petitioner feels is not will not Uh, many of those are what the petitioner feels is not, will not be an issue and yet. There's no way that this can be really policed or or or, uh, i- if we approve it, it's uh. Then people have to live with it. And I do think that our decision, the last, when we voted uh, for denial. Uh, nothing has really changed in my mind uh, from these things and so I. I think it's not the right use of that. Uh, property by the neighbors and the bakery.
Okay, we uh, need a motion on the floor. I I I have, I'm sorry, one question, does, does bakery, does the bakery have concerns with it? I have not spoken to them.
And I don't believe we as staff have received anything from them either.
What is the letter recommending approval of again? A conditional use for dog boarding?
Yeah, it would be for the conditional use for pet care facilities with overnight boarding. So the pet care facilities is allowed by right in the C two shopping district. The overnight boarding is what is requiring and triggering the conditional use permit in this situation.
Are they already operating there as a, as a? Pet care during the day?
At this site or in this general vicinity? Because I guess the answer is neither, because there uh, at the site night, because there aren't any that I, that I am aware of in the general vicinity either. So this would be an introduction of a new use.
A concern that I have is that the caretaker, a caretaker will live onsite and care for the dogs as part of their leasing agreement. I really think what they're saying is that they're gonna rent to someone who likes pets. And likes animals, which I can appreciate, but if they go on vacation or they spend a night away from the home. Is it possible that those dogs could bark all night and no one would be there to manage it? I mean, I don't think we can require a tenant to be at a facility every night. That's, that's not part of it, an employee does that, but a tenant doesn't.
Dogs could bark all night while he's, while a resident is there or a caretaker, you know, someone living there is there anyway.
Say that again, I'm sorry you cut out.
I said the dogs could bark whether or not someone is living there or staying there overnight also.
Okay.
How how many dogs, pets can a, a resident, you know, residential, people behind him, how many dogs can they have?
So the county's code uh, of ordinance is, is that we really control it through the nuisance code. Is essentially as long as the number of animals that you have does not trigger nuisance and that's going to be through either barking. Um, the creation of unsanitary and unsightly conditions. Um, that's really how the county um, controls most of these issues is through a nuisance issue. We don't really have a, oh, you shall only have two, uh, you know, unneutered type of, type of rules that that, that some jurisdictions have.
I think most indentures that I've seen, which is separate from St. Louis County will limit to two.
That's very frequent in subdivisions, yes.
Right, which is a separate issue. So if, if the resident behind has two or three dogs and they become a nuisance. Then they will be cited and they will have to either clean it up or get rid of a couple of the pets. How would this business fall under that same if that becomes a nuisance? If they're the barking, if it's not sanitary, then would they be held to that same standards and then they would have to uh, fix it up or have to get rid of the animals? How would that work?
So it would be through the enforcement of the conditional use permit itself. So um, the conditional use permit is enforceable over a property owner. Um, based on the conditions that the commission puts into those, into those permits. So if it was, and let's use a theoretical, so a case like this, if if the commission were to state, you know, no more than ten dogs. And the dogs may not be outside later than nine PM. Um, then it would be a policing issue that the county would have to ensure that um, one way or another that our inspectors. That if there were an issue, the inspectors would go in and and verify that the conditional use permit is being uh, is being um, you know, properly upheld.
Yeah. And then, and then if that is not the case, does this business license or? Can, can then they be forced to either shut down or either come in compliance or?
Come into, yes, come, they would be required to come into compliance through one of the many methods that the county has at its disposal to, to require that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I don't think we have a motion.
Are you, what are you for a motion? Huh?
Yeah, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion for deny or or to uh. We're coming back to a letter of recommendation, right?
So you can.
Not to change what we've done before.
Reiterate your denial.
Right, thank you.
Do we have a second? We have a first and second discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, abstaining again.
Abstaining again. Show seven zero one. And we'll go on.
I I apologize, was it six zero two?
Yes.
I believe Mr. Fagan abstained.
Yeah, I was cutting out, sorry. Okay, six zero two. And we'll go on to site plans, we've got three, first one, twelve dash twenty-three. Ezra Salomovic.
Mr. Hilsinger, would you like to go through all of these individually or go through them together?
Um, we can do them together.
Okay, um, so site plans this evening are uh, PC twelve dash twenty-three Azra Salemovic. Uh, PC one thirty-three dash sixty-six Buckholz Mortuary and PC twelve dash twenty-two Mason Lane LLC. So I'll click through them. And we are recommending approval of all of these site plans.
So the Buckholz one, this is, uh, I, and forgive me Abby, if you were going to jump in, this is they're adding some of that parallel parking into the front of their structure. Um, that the commission voted to, to recommend approval of mending that ordinance just a few weeks ago, so this is that, this is that site plan.
Thanks, Jacob. And then Mason Lane is the uh, the laser me site.
Laser me site.
And the changes are um, new curbing along the entrance from Mason Lane and then uh, parking lot striping.
And on Higgy Road, what are we doing there?
Uh, I apologize, that was the request for a conditional use or an amended C eight to permit the uh, a tattoo parlor. So there are no changes to the site um, proposed.
Okay, okay, uh, with that, we need a motion. Motion for approval.
I get a motion.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero, Jacob, anything good?
Yes, I have two things that I want to uh, bring up with the commission first and I'm sad that she's not here, but. Uh, I think the commission should know that Mel Wilson was promoted to the deputy director of planning, so. Um, I have, was given the good fortune uh, to be able to create that position. I have come to rely on Mel's um, not just her um, good sense of of planning. Uh, but also just her really excellent administrative skills, I I really rely on her on running these meetings. Um, so um, she, I think it was well deserved, um, and I, she um, is this is a, a real asset to the residents of St. Louis County to have someone of her caliber and her work. Um, uh, working for, working here at the county, so I wanted to to let the commission know about that. And then the other piece is that at tomorrow's council meeting, the, if any of you have have looked at their agenda, you will notice that on the communications items of the agenda for uh, council tomorrow. Is a request by the department of planning to uh, be permitted to enter into contract negotiations uh, with the selected firm for the comprehensive plan. So I, as you see on their agenda, uh, it is, it is publicly available. Um, the selection committee uh, worked very diligently on making their selection. Um, we made that recommendation to the council and so we are moving forward with uh, with that, with the selection committee for uh, the comprehensive plan and I wanted. Uh, you all to be aware of that and we are uh, drawing closer to uh, having them fully on board and getting ready to that process. So I wanted to keep everyone informed.
You tell us next week?
Yes, mm-hmm, absolutely.
Anything else, anyone? Yeah, member Bedell is here, so the last two votes should be seven zero two and and nine zero. Okay, didn't I know you got on, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bedell.
Okay, with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
All moved.
Second?
Again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those eyes have it nine zero. And with that, we'll see everyone uh, June seventeen, next Monday.
Have a nice week, everybody.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Bye-bye.